Okay. We're back to reconvene. Sorry for our tardiness, we apologize. I'd like to call on Trustee Lang to report out items, actions taken in closed session.
And there were no actions taken in closed session.
Okay. Now, I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the indication led by Trustee Milchiker, followed by the pledge allegiance conducted by Trustee Prendergast.
We pray for strength and wisdom in guiding our community colleges for the benefit of our students. For over 120 years, the community colleges have been instrumental in making the United States of America an exceptional nation. The community colleges have succeeded in integrating people into the fabric of our nation and providing opportunity for all. We are blessed to be a part of such a great and innovative institution. Amen.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our renaissance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Grace, are there any requests for public comments? We do have one?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have it?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I do, I papered it. We usually get papered. So, we do have requests for public comment from Pedram Haidarpur?
Yeah.
Okay, and welcome, and I just ask that you keep your comments to two minutes, thank you.
Okay. So, my name is Pedram Haidarpur, and I'm here representing Associated Student Government at Saddleback, and I'm here to address a very important event that's coming up, and that's the St. Baldricks fundraiser for cancer research. The event will take place Monday, May 9th, in the Quad, and all the money that we fundraise from now till the day of the event will be put towards the cancer research done by St. Baldricks. And the whole point of the event is structured around what we call shavees, and the shavees are people who volunteer to shave their head at the day of the event. Matter of the fact, I'm actually one of the shavees that will participate in the event. And how you donate to St. Baldricks is you go on the website, so you can search up on Google, stbaldricks.org. You go on there, in the right-hand corner, you can search up Saddleback, and then once you get there, there's gonna be multiple links. The second link is the link for our page. You click on that, and you can donate strictly to the pool fund that will be Saddleback College, or you can donate to individual volunteers, and I will be listed under one of them. Thank you so much, and we just want everybody's help to raise awareness for this event, raise as much as money as we can.
Thanks. Do you wanna say the website again?
Yeah, that's stbaldricks.org, S-T dot B-A-L-D-R-I-C-K-S dot O-R-G.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll turn to oral reports, and the board reports, and let's start with Trustee Witt.
Oh, my goodness. I wasn't ready for that. It has been a very busy month with the galas. I really, I have to say, I enjoyed them. Sometimes one isn't in favor after you worked all day to go and get dressed up and show your best, but I have to say, the IVC gala was phenomenal. It was in a wonderful setting. I networked with new people, made new friends, and I just appreciate all the work that went into it. And I did several other things, but I'll let you guys talk about them, because you were there too.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Milchiker.
Okay, I'll mention a few of the events I attended since the last board meeting, and indeed, as Trustee Witt has said, it's been a very busy month. First, I attended the Saddleback College's 40th Anniversary Emeritus Art Institute Show on the third floor of the Learning Research Center. They had works there that I would be proud to own myself, done by our very own Emeritus students. Then, the IVC Foundation Event at the Marconi Museum, and I just want everyone to know, the board members don't get comped for these events. We have to pay just the same amount that all the rest of you do. But I also would like to say that every single person at my table, and I was at the board and chancellor's table, actually donated more than the cost of the event when they went around asking people for money. Everyone donated, so I was very proud to be at that table. Then, I attended the National Debate, oh, this year, the National Debate Society was this year hosted by Irvine Valley College, which is always a top winner, and this year was a top winner nationally. There were over 1,000 participants at that event, and some of our professors and former professors, Craig Grossman, Gary Rodbald, and Edwin Tonkinson, gave rousing speeches at the event, very, very exciting. I was interviewed on Laguna Woods TV, and talking about the successes of our college. The Board of Trustees' listening sessions were very informative, and I want to thank everyone who attended. The Irvine Valley College Cultural Competence Summit was excellent, and really, we got some good information about cultural competency. The 40th Anniversary of the Emeritus Institute Celebration at the Laguna Hills Community Center was just incredible, and I just got a call from an assemblyman that the Assembly is going to be doing a resolution signed by the entire Assembly in honor of the 40th Anniversary of our Emeritus Institute, so I'm very proud of that. Trustee Wagner and Trustee Bro, I'm sorry, Assemblyman Wagner and Assemblyman Bro brought it to my attention, and they'll be giving us the resolution from the Senate, from the Assembly, excuse me. And then also, the very last thing I'd like to mention is that the Drama Department at both colleges is incredibly outstanding. I attended events at both colleges, there are Broadway musical productions. They did She Loves Me, and directed by Scott Farthing at Saddleback College, was incredible, and then The Drowsy Chaperone at Irvine Valley College. All were student productions, and they all could rival the Broadway musicals, so I'm just very proud of our colleges, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lang.
Yes, since we did get off to a late start tonight, I'm gonna forego my comments this evening, thank you.
You get a gold star, all right. Trustee Wright.
Several of the events that have been already reported on, I did attend. I did attend the Irvine Valley College Celebrating Excellence Foundation Awards Dinner at Marconi Automotive Museum, wonderful event. I enjoyed the slot car race. It was kind of a fun event with the two presidents, so that was a lot of fun. I attended also the Phi-Rho Pi banquet hosted by the IVC forensic team, and as Trustee Milchiker mentioned, there were 1,000 participants. It was a debate tournament that lasted for about four days, so, a wonderful event. I also attended the trustees' listening sessions at both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, and enjoyed them very much, and we had good attendance at both of these events. I also attended the IVC Cultural Competence Summit, and particularly enjoyed the keynote speaker, she was a wonderful presenter. I attended a follow-up meeting regarding the listening sessions last Monday, and then finally, I wanna just talk briefly about a couple of other things. The Saddleback College Athletic Trainer, his name is Brad McReynolds, was selected as the 2016 National Athletic Trainer Association National Athletic Trainer of the Year for community colleges and small colleges. He's a wonderful person, and does a wonderful job. Also, I wanted to talk about IVC's men tennis tournament. They dominated again, repeating as the state champions. And the IVC men's tennis tournament, I'm sorry, I might have said volleyball, but it was tennis tournament, they won. And then finally, this will be an item coming up, there are three people retiring from Saddleback College. If you add up the number of years these three people have taught here at Saddleback College, it's 101 years. There is Carol Bender, wonderful instructor, she teaches German and ESL, she's taught for 39 years. Nancy Evans has taught math, mathematics for 27 years, and Patricia Evans, computer information management instructor, she's taught for 35 years. So, we're losing some real talent there.
Thank you, Trustee Wright. Okay, I also attended the IVC Gala. Glenn, give the foundation team a big thumbs up, well done at the Marconi, excellent job. I know how much work went into that, and please thank them for all the work they do. I also attended the Emeritus Institute Celebration a couple of weeks ago in Laguna Hills, was proud and happy to be part of that. It's an amazing offering we have through the Emeritus Institute, and the people at the tables are very interesting, curious, it was really always a great experience being with them. Tennis is near and dear to my heart, Glenn, and I'm happy to see the IVC team take the state title, huge accomplishment, well done, very proud of them. We did have the two trustee's listening sessions, I attended both. There was a lot of input on the part of the folks who were in attendance, and I know that the trustees appreciated that, and I think what we try to do is listen and then decide if there's an appropriate action that can be taken by the board, that's within our authority as a board, and I think we're, you'll see where we are gonna try to do that. And then finally, I, personal note sort of, my son's high school team played here a couple of weeks ago, Mission View High School versus Capistrano Valley on the baseball field, and that was a great experience, and I really thank Dean Lippold and Coach Summer McCartney, his staff, the players, gracious hosts. What an opportunity for the high school kids to play on the field here. I know, we don't pay you anything to do that, I'm told, so, thank you for hosting, and great experience, and to Summer and his team, Todd, tell them, thank you very much, the boys really appreciate it. Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I attended the IVC Celebration of Excellence Foundation Awards Dinner at the Marconi Automobile Museum in Tustin, it was excellent, very enjoyable, wonderful evening, and it was a lot of fun. And then April 6th, I attended both the listening sessions at Saddleback College, and then on to the IVC listening session, which was very educational, very good. I would like to have maybe some more listening sessions to hear more from the faculty, maybe one in the fall, and that's how much I learned and enjoyed it.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
Okay, while I was extremely busy with swim meets, I did not attend any of those events, but they all sound excellent. Okay, so I'm gonna announce this publicly. Pedram, as many of you know, I've supported prostate cancer in November with mustaches, and asked for donations. I'm gonna sign up to have my head shaved.
Yay.
I offered up lunch for IVC and their foundation, so this is what I think I can do for Saddleback, and see if anybody wants to see that happen. They have to pay for it, though. That's all I have.
Trustee Mamond, student trustee Mamond.
I wanted to start off by encouraging you guys all to donate money towards Trustee Prendergast for shaving his head, and also to Pedram as well. He sits in front of me in math class, and I can't see past that head. And also, as many of you guys know, tonight is my last meeting. It's been an honor being here with you all throughout these months. I wanted to leave on these notes, asking the board and everyone that's involved at the schools to make sure that we keep focus on our students, and invest in things that directly affect our students' achievement, as those are what really makes our school stand out, and those are what brings out the results that when Saddleback gets ranked number one, and IVC gets ranked one of the top 20 schools in the nation for community colleges, and stuff like that. Invest in technology, invest in our professors, and make sure that all the students have access to all the services available on campus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chancellor's report.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, you and Dave are on the same wavelength. So, we now have college presidents' reports. Who's gonna go?
We were fighting.
Todd Burnett.
See who would go first. Thank you. Good evening. As you all know, this is the final stretch. We have four weeks from tomorrow. In fact, commencement for both of us are on Tuesday, May 24th, which I don't know if the last time the district's ever had a commencement on a Tuesday, but this year it is. As you know, because of the end of the year, we have many events, and so Glenn and I are gonna talk about some of those events that are happening for each of our colleges, that's our report for tonight. First thing, would encourage you obviously to attend as many of the ones we're not gonna mention, because there's so many on our campus, but first and foremost, of course, we have our annual scholarship ceremony coming up on Friday, May 13th, at 3:00 PM in the gym. We have the first, actually, ever we've done, recognition awards ceremony on Wednesday, May 18th, 3:00 PM at McKinney Theater, and at that, we're going to recognize all the folks in the past year that have major accomplishments or achievements. We will recognize our new tenured faculty, we'll recognize our Professors of the Year, we'll recognize the Innovation Awards, down the list, recognize Brad McReynolds, and anybody who's won a statewide or a national or county-wide award. So, we look forward to seeing all of you there. Also, hope tomorrow, if you can attend it, it's the final day, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder here, Claire, but our One Book One College, and by the way, folks, Claire, thank you so much for your leadership, and all the faculty for doing this, it truly was an amazing achievement and a wonderful thing to follow through the whole year. Well, tomorrow, the author, Michael Pittree, is going to be here. They're having an event at 11:30 AM in McKinney Theater in the Fine Arts Quad, and he'll be coming and talking about the book Fives and Twenty Fives, which is the One Book One College. Finally, I'm pleased to congratulate, we just came out now, our Professors of the Year, Biology Professor Stephen Tay, English Professor Jeff Oderlin, and Emeritus Health Professor Lisa Messinger, which we already know, we went to the 40th. So, anyway, they will also all be recognized at the recognition awards ceremony and commencement. Thank you.
Todd, President Rockmore.
Thank you very much. Like Todd, a similar suite of year-ending events that we have going on, commencement, wanted to let you know that this year, we have Erwan Chemerinsky from UCI Law School speaking, and so we very much look forward to that. We both have our scholarship programs, and so with each of these, there should be flyers that have gone out already, and we'll make sure that those continue to come out as reminders, so that you don't lose that date. We have kept, at this point, our tenure recognition separate, as a separate reception that we have in our PAC, and that information will be coming out to you soon as well. It's a relatively short, but very informative event, they're recognizing our faculty. We have also developed a college recognition event, I think the date has just been set, it's in May, and again, you'll receive a flyer on that. This is where we're going to take all of those commendations and resolutions, pull them together, and recognize everyone at once, and give all of you an opportunity in a more intimate setting to congratulate them, if you have time to do that, be important. Our Teachers of the Year, what we do is try to avoid heart attacks, what we do is we step into the classroom, and when suits come into the room, while instruction is going on, you have to be very skillful at getting the reason you're there out very fast, and so, but we do go in and we announce each of our faculty and their success, and there's usually a great applause after the heart restarts. But full-time is Rebecca Beck, she's an ESL professor. Our part-time is Rosio Beltrong in Spanish, and Emeritus is Catherine Kramer, and when we visited her, she was teaching film studies, so we're very pleased with that. I'd also like to recognize our Classified Employee of the Year, Mark Peterson, and he's a tech in music, and a very well-deserved award, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, Associated Student Governments, Saddleback College. And you're not William.
Not William.
That happened last time, too.
It did, it did. My name is Lucy Hendricks, and I am the Chief Justice of the Saddleback College Associated Student Government. To start with some of our updates, we'll be having the elections this week, so by the end of this week, we'll know who we have as our team for next year, so we're very excited about that. To reiterate the nice public comment that Pedram gave us all, we will be doing the St. Baldricks fundraiser on May 9th, so we're very excited about Trustee Prendergast participating, that'll be super fun.
Probably.
You're trying to get it in right now. So, as many people that would like to come by or donate to that, you can ask me if you have any questions, or anyone from the Saddleback ASG that's here tonight. On Thursday, we'll be having an Awareness Day in the Quad, where we'll highlight different issues and have information about homelessness, mental health, domestic violence, so that should be a really good event as well, so if you're around the Saddleback campus on Thursday, be sure to come by. And lastly, we'll have the water fountains that we've mentioned to you several times in the reports over the last few months finalized, we've acquired bids and met with some facilities, done the preliminary work there, so all we have left is really just to order the units. And lastly, William obviously was not able to make it tonight, as you all can see, but this will be his last meeting as the president, so he did want me to read a little statement from him, so, I'll read that now. "Good evening, everyone. I would first like to thank you all for taking leadership in our community. This year, ASG has progressed significantly. We have become an organization that is increasingly self-sufficient and efficient. This year, for the first time, we have undertaken the task of planning for next year in an effort to curb the steep learning curve for our new members. It is my hope that in three or four years from now, Saddleback's ASG will be a significant contributor to our campus, impacting more students positively than ever before. As always, I would like to remind the board that student involvement in programs like the student government are key to creating tomorrow's leaders. I hope that you continually invest in projects that promote leadership and involvement. Once again, thank you for this great opportunity to learn, grow, and serve. See you soon in person." And many of the events that President Burnett mentioned, William will be there, so you can all give him your best wishes there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. ASG IVC.
Good evening, Board of Trustees' members. So, most of my report today is, I've been out of the country for a couple of weeks, so, glad to be back, but ASG's still doing great things. So, to begin with, for next year, we are proud to announce that we do have a full team. We have 19 executive cabinet members and 22 student senators. Also, every single committee has been filled and ready to go with commissioners. They did begin training as of last week, and they will continue to do so this month every week, probably around, I think, I believe Fridays. Also, for our Culture Competence Summit, 32 of our incoming student leaders represented ASG out of the 300 participants. What they did was just go out there and teach students about different cultures and their impacts on campus. We did have one African-American woman come up to us, and she said the following, she was like, "I am one of the few Black students on our campus, and don't see that in the diversity of our faculty. It felt good to see so many faculty concerns about what impacts my learning and finding ways they can learn more." And to be honest, it's amazing, throughout the year, I've noticed a lot of students have been able to open up with us and step up and really discuss their situations and everything, they believe that what they like is going on, and we've been able to change a lot of things, so that's great. Budget and Finance, they submitted, the ASG Budget and Finance Committee submitted their recommendations to the ASG for their final approval before submission to the Vice President of Student Services, which is Dr. Fontanella, and the President for Approval. Also, what was brought up a couple of weeks back regarding, they wanted to request, my ASG's looking into requesting a change for the opt-out system, so what we have is, for the AS-IVC sticker, they would like to change it from an opt-in to an opt-out process. They're still investigating to see if it's even doable, but that's just on the table for there. And that's pretty much it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have board requests for reports. We do have a request for report on workday progress that has been made since the launch of this program, and this was an issue that was identified at both the Saddleback College and IVC listening sessions. So...
I move that we approve the request for report.
Motion by Trustee Prendergast, and a trustee, second by Trustee Witt. Let's go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, with the student advisory yes vote. And that report, the discussion item will be next month, correct?
Yes.
At the May, at the May board meeting of the Board of Trustees? Okay. No discussion items, or, should I move it here now? Okay, so let's move on to the consent calendar. I do, I have a poll, 5.2, are there any other polls from trustees?
5.4.
5.9 and 5.11.
5.7.
Excuse me.
Okay. Is there a motion to move the remainder of the items?
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Wright, second by Trustee Milchiker. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, so, I think I'll do 5-point, my poll, last, which is 5.2, so I'll go to 5.4, and that's Trustee Wright.
Just a small correction here. This says material fee listed in Exhibit A was for the Math/Science/Engineering Division. It also includes some costs for Community Ed Emeritus Institute K-12 partnerships.
Actually, Board of Trustees', we had asked that this item be polled and be brought to the next meeting, because there's another adjustment that needs to be made on the item.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. All right. 5.7, Trustee Lang.
Sorry. Fiddling around with the buttons here. Okay, 5.7. The question, or the concern I had, was that this item came to us without any of the necessary sign-offs, which normally occur, so I'm looking at Exhibit B, page 3 of 3, and frankly, I don't think we should approve this item until proper protocol has been followed.
Any response from the district?
Right, we still don't have the signature pages, so we could bring it back the next month.
Okay, so this item's being polled till next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. 5.9, Trustee Witt.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to applaud IVC for instituting this, the Campus-wide Emergency Phone Mass Notification System. I see that the cost is here, but is there going to be a continuous annual, I would imagine? Was that part of the bid? You know, what would it cost? Is the installation part of it, or is it, I wanted to know, that's a lot of money, and is that the whole cost, the entire cost?
If I could, I'd like to bring up Devit Kachatrian, who has that project.
Good evening. This amount includes the installation, and as well as the equipment that comes with it. The actual project includes a lot of site preparation, that's why it seems, you know, expensive, but it does include a lot of the installation work, and it's a complete package, my understanding.
My question was, I understand the installation, but is there a continual annual fee to this company?
The continual annual fee to the company would be minimal, because it's, there are about 12 or 13 phones, so the fee would be very minimal. It would be equivalent to maintaining a phone system that would come with it, because it's a notification system that connects with the campus police department, and they would be getting notifications in cases of emergency.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there a motion to move the item? A motion by Trustee Lang, second by Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote. 5.9 is approved unanimously, and with student advisory yes vote. 5.11, Trustee Witt.
Okay. This has to do with outside speakers, and I was just curious, I'm asking, is there a rubric that we use, that we ask the speakers to fill out of their topics? I'm just thinking about, is there ever a problem that they bring up political views or whatever? I mean, it's a public speaker coming in, and they're offered an honorarium and travel expenses, but do they ever offer us a, an example of what they're going to, you know, what they're going to share? Meaning, you have a public speaker coming in, and I only had this one time happen to me, and I thought they were going to speak on a certain topic, and they just went off into another planet. So, I just wondered if there was a rubric that we ask them to fill out, what their intentions are when they speak.
I stand for Simmons.
For speakers that do receive an honorarium, that means they're getting paid for their services to sp-
services to speak, there is a contract that is filled out in which there's a scope of work, which deliver, the delivering department does work with them to define what the speaker should do. That doesn't preclude somebody from speaking off-topic, but it does do that for the speakers who are getting paid. For speakers who are not getting paid, we don't have a contractor with them.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to move the item? Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Okay, so five point two, I polled, and this is regarding resolutions. And this item reflects a new resolution process for our board agenda, I think agreed upon by the colleges, I assume. And I think it's wonderful that our honorees are going to be recognized on their own campuses and the company of their own peers, and I assume you'll invite all of us to attend those sessions as well. I'm proud of our Faculty of the Year and want to acknowledge their excellence as seen through the eyes of the students. I see IVC's Model UN team and forensic team continue to dominate at national competitions. Applaud our classified employees for the work they do to help our colleges and district run every day. This is the week that we honor them statewide. So as Board President, I'm really honored to take a moment to recognize the student trustee among, I'm not gonna, not gonna read from the script, but I, you know, you've been a wonderful trustee, offering, I mean, this is two consecutive student trustees I think we've had on the board here, really fortunate to have. You've offered a lot of insightful, insightful comments, good questions, a pleasure to be on the board, you're gonna go far, whether it's academically or in your career, and I think you have seven references here for you to call on. And I'm happy to be your reference at any time, and really proud, proud of you as a student trustee, and you should be proud of the, the work you've done here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you come over here for a second, I have something to present to you. Just, we're giving him a plaque and then a long resolution, which I'm not gonna read, but it just says everything that I said, that he's been terrific and, and we love him. Thank you. Congratulations.
I have an iPhone, you can use my iPhone. Do you wanna take a picture?
Yeah. Can you take?
I'm sorry?
Tim? Tim?
Come on, take a picture.
Is there somebody he wants to, is there somebody he'd like to introduce?
Take a picture. Want the full board? Come on, guys. It's all, come on. No, no, all of you, come on.
Is there somebody, somebody he'd like to introduce?
Oh, hey, I'd just like to thank my family for being here. Thank you, guys.
Who's the mom?
The mom is there. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You guys got it?
Thank you.
Great job.
Good idea. Oh, here comes Gary. That's a good idea.
Mac, Mac.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You could tell that wasn't scripted. Okay. We'll now move forward.
We need to vote on the item.
Oh, we need to vote on it? Okay. All right, we need to vote on the item, five point two. Is there, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lang and a second by trustee Milchiker.
Great, thanks.
You can vote yes for yourself, but that's okay. Unanimous trustee yes vote and abstention from the student advisory trustee.
All right.
All righty. Okay, so...
One more time.
We're moving on to six point oh, general action item. Six point one, lease of real property amended and restated ground lease between Promenade and the District. We have speakers on this.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Deborah Fitzsimmons, and I'm here to speak on item number six point one. We have before you a lease of real property for amended and restated ground lease between FPA Four Promenade LLC and the District. A little bit of background here. We have entered into agreement for several years now for a twenty-three acre site that has been improved with the four-hundred-unit apartment building complex built in nineteen-eighty-seven that runs adjacent to Saddleback College on Marguerite Parkway. And the original term of the ground lease runs through September of twenty forty, and the new lessees, FPA Four Promenade, took over the leasehold rights in twenty fourteen. Fowler Property Acquisitions is the parent company, and the previous laissee had allowed the condition of the premises to really deteriorate. So Fowler Properties has approached the District and Saddleback College for a proposal for sixteen point five million renovation project, in which they want to undertake this, undertake this very, very large capital expense and request a thirty-five-year lease extension to do the development. And that would take the lease from September of twenty forty, which is our current expiration date, to September of twenty seventy-five. Here's the site that we are talking about, and you can see in the red outline, there were new apartments, they renamed the site, and it's located on Marguerite, obviously adjacent to Saddleback College campus. Some of the benefits of the amended and restated lease, or it's gonna provide sixteen point five million dollars in significant renovations of renew. It's gonna build the Arboretum Trail at the base of the slope, and this is a project that is very near and dear to President Burnett's heart, and I see Blake Stevens clapping, he's very excited about that as well. It's gonna prove the connection and access to and from Saddleback College along that area. It's gonna include a hundred and twenty-eight beds of dedicated student housing, and I know this is something that Saddleback College has been wanting for a long time. And what they're gonna do is, it's gonna be a pilot program, and if it's successful, then they're gonna go ahead and expand on that student housing element of the project. It amends the lease to improve ground lease clauses and protections. The current lease wasn't very good, and obviously, when we mentioned that it was deteriorating over there, the maintenance of that site is because the ground lease protections weren't in there for us to be able to do anything about that. It provides a lease extension fee to Saddleback for two point five six million dollars, and extends favorable lease payment terms and financially favorable outcomes for the District. We have some pictures just to give you a little bit of a highlight. You can see in the little squares, and I know they're really little on the screen, but some before and after pictures where they want to improve the market windows and entryways, the pool areas, building exteriors, and you can see some of the building exteriors. It's gonna be a much better living environment for the occupants. Here's the clubhouse and leasing office, and again, you can see the before pictures, very old aesthetics and new improved exteriors. Inside, the unit interiors, this one's showing kitchens, you can see the before pictures, very dated, nineteen seventies and eighties-like kitchens, and after pictures are gonna be stainless steel and modern countertops, et cetera, new cabinetry and flooring. Again, very similar things being done to the bathrooms, again, the before and after. Clubhouse, a sample of what, it's a much more inviting environment for our students and other occupants of the property. Fitness center sample. In the student housing unit, you can get an idea, it's more traditional student housing, where you have this sort of shared space, shared kitchen and living room area with two bedrooms that are shared. Here it shows a little bit about the enhancements here, you can sort of see the Arboretum Trail and so, and access to the Saddleback College. Some more on the Arboretum Trail improvements. This table shows you the current lease terms and the amended and restated lease terms. As you can see, the expiration and options to extend, same, the rent is the same, the annual rent escalations are the same, which are favorable for the District. The lease extension fee is new, the renovation requirement is new. We have maintenance requirement before, where we didn't even have any specific maintenance standard over there, and this, this were improved and maintained in first class condition, which we desire. We didn't have any approval rights for major work to be done, and we have approval rights on alterations over three hundred thousand, and some additional improved conditions for assignment, holdover, and surrender. So our recommendation to you tonight is for the Board of Trustees to approve the amended and restated ground lease and authorize the execution by staff and the accompanying amended and restated ground lease agreement, which is Exhibit Eight, between FPA Four Promenade LLC and the District. And I am remiss, because I should have been introducing a few people that are here tonight for this item, and we have our real estate advisor, Greg Goddard, here tonight, if you could stand a minute, if you have any questions. And we also have three people who are from FPA, Redtail Acquisition specifically, Ben Cattell, who's the principal, Tim Kim, President of Land Acquisitions and Development, and Redwood Construction, Todd Stark. If you guys could please stand for us, please. They have been working very actively at Saddleback College, not only President Burnett, but the Vice Presidents, Kathy Worley and John Azuravich, and we had Carol Hilton involved, Chief Higa involved, Juana Avalos involved, I'm trying to think who else, but a lot of people were, provided input to this, along with these folks who have been very interactive in the process to get to the place where we are today on the site development plan. So with that, if you have any questions, we have all these great people here, as well as the college staff.
Well, I just had one comment, maybe a quick question, that I think the Board has a lot of expectations on this development, looking forward to see the progress. Welcome here tonight, gentlemen. And I guess, Deborah, if you could just restate or state again the benefits to the students of moving forward with this agreement?
Sure. And Todd can also chip in if you want to, President Burnett. There is gonna be a dedicated student housing component of this property, and there's gonna be interaction with Saddleback College staff and departments to actively market the site. And there's also going to be a lot of additional amenities that are gonna be provided at the property. And of course, the income is obviously for the college and will contribute to other programming, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no further questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the item? Motion by trustee Prendergast?
Second.
I'll give it to trustee Jay, second by trustee Jay. Go ahead and cast your vote. Item is approved, unanimous trustee yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we are turning to Board Agenda item six point two, South Orange County Community College District Public Hearing for the Certification of the SEQA Document and Approval of Site Plans for Submission to the City of Tustin for the ATEP IVC First Building and Associated ATEP Utilities and Infrastructure Phase One Projects. That was a long sentence. Before we have the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Deborah Fitzsimmons will provide an introduction. Deborah?
Thank you. The agenda item pertains to a public hearing required by SOC CD's Implementation Agreement with the City of Tustin for improvements at the ATEP site. The public hearing is required to certify the SEQA document and approve the project site plans. There are two related board items that relate to this public hearing, Item six point three and Item six point four. Item six point three is titled, "The ATEP California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA), April 2016, Adopt Resolution Number Sixteen dash O eight, Certifying the Final SEQA Document for the ATEP IVC First Building Project and the ATEP Utilities and Infrastructure Project Phase One." Item six point four is ATEP's IVC First Building Project and ATEP Utilities and Infrastructure Project One Project, Approval of Site Plans, Adopt Resolution Number Sixteen point O nine and Sixteen point one O. We normally do not bring site plans to the Board for approval. This is a requirement with the City of Tustin for our ATEP projects. Both of these projects align with the Development Master Plan that you've already approved here as a board and seen regarding the ATEP property. Will we be presenting an hour-long session on the ATEP property at the May board meeting, at a special board meeting of the Board? If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process this evening, both Brandy Delanna and I, as well as our consultant on SEQA, Jeremy Kraut, is here this evening.
Thank you, Deborah. Does the Board have any questions to staff or consultants to assist with understanding of this matter? Seeing none, Board, item six point two, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Now have an opportunity for public comments. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, six point two is concluded. We'll now move on to item six point three, and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the item. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Any further discussion? Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. We'll now move on to item six point four, and I will entertain a motion to approve this item. Motion by trustee Lang, second by trustee Wright. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay. Now that, we will move on to Board Agenda item six point five, South Orange County Community College District Public Hearing for the Saddleback College Exterior Lighting and Controls retrofit Phase Two Project Energy Service Contract. Before we have that hearing, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons will again provide an introduction.
It is public hearing tonight. The agenda item pertains to a public hearing to allow the District to enter into a contract for an energy service contract pursuant to the requirements of California Government Code forty-two seventeen. This code permits public agencies to enter into an energy service contract on terms that its governing board determines are in the best interests of the public agency. This process entails using a formal request for proposal process. There are two other board items that relate to this public hearing, Items six point six and six point seven. After approval for the use of this approach, each project will be presented to the Board on its own merit and relative to project-specific findings. Agenda item six point six will authorize the District on behalf of Saddleback College to enter into an energy service contract for their exterior lighting and controls retrofit Phase Two project, and agenda item six point seven is the item presented for your approval for the vendor contract itself, which is an energy service contract with Anderson and Howard Electric Incorporated, for the Saddleback College Exterior Lighting and Controls retrofit Phase Two project for the amount of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If you have any questions throughout this public hearing process this evening, Brandy Delanna and myself are here to assist, as well as John Azuravich, the campus facilities director.
Thank you, Deborah. So does the Board have any questions to staff or consultants to assist with your understanding of this matter? Seeing none, Board Agenda six point five, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open, and any requests or desires to speak or have any public comments? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing none, six point five is concluded. We'll now move to item six point six, Adopt Resolution Sixteen dash zero seven, authorizing entering into an energy service contract for the exterior lighting controls retrofit Phase Two project at Saddleback College. I'll entertain a motion to approve the item.
Move approval.
Motion by trustee Milchiker. Is there a second? Second by, I think trustee Witt just beat you, trustee Jay, and go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Now that the resolution is approved, we may move to the last item for the Saddleback College Energy Service Contract. This is item six point seven, Saddleback College Exterior Lighting and Controls retrofit Phase Two, award of energy service contract to Anderson and Howard Electric for the amount of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Motion by trustee Milchiker. Is there a second? Second by trustee Witt. Discussion, trustee Lang.
Yes, this item frankly gave me a little bit of heartburn. I was not happy in reading the, I guess, sta- I was not happy in reading the, I guess, status report and recommendation for this item, that this was a sole source award that we made under the possibility that we would lose state funds under Prop 39 if we didn't spend this money, which strikes me as problematic, I guess, from the standpoint that either we didn't plan very adequately here to be able to allow enough lead time to get enough other vendors to respond to this or something else. And I'd be curious to hear from the District about that.
Sure. I'll ask Executive Director Brandy Delanda to come up and explain the process that was used and our recommendation.
Hi there.
Hi.
So it was our typical bid process where by public contract code, we advertise for two weeks and after a third week, so advertise, advertise, third week, then we can collect proposals from the interested parties. So we took all those steps. 16 bidders were there for the mandatory job walk. 16 bidders were initially interested in this project. I cannot explain to you why only one of them came to the table. I heard you mention it was sole source, which is a different kind of an approach than what was used, in that we allowed for everyone in the public to have an opportunity to provide proposals on this project.
Yeah, maybe my terminology was bad, but I'm only seeing one vendor bid here.
Only one vendor did come back. Now, that vendor, Anderson &amp; Howe, is the vendor that provided us the services on Phase One. That allowed us to have a familiarity with their quality of work and their ability to perform the job, and a higher level of confidence than we would have otherwise had if we didn't have that experience with them. So that contributed to our decision to move forward. I appreciate your concern around the need to spend the money on the Prop 39 funds. It is true that there is a deadline for completing this work of, the deadline is established at June 30th, though the State will allow for us to extend as far as August. If this work isn't completed by that time, then the money would revert back to the State, which is not only a negative mark for the District, because what they've done when they assign these funds to us is they acknowledge a trust in us to expend them. But it also causes a black mark on the State Chancellor's office. There's a desire through the Prop 39 funds to expend money to allow employment in the sustainable energy field. And certain amounts of money at the state level have been allocated to the State Chancellor's Office or community colleges because we demonstrate our ability to expend those monies. The same is not said for K-12s because they don't have the same ability to move these funds through, to spend them, to get those jobs in play. So it's not just at the local level that there would be some concern, but also at a state level, it wouldn't be a good thing for us, which is also another reason we moved forward.
So let me, maybe I can ask a couple of questions here.
Of course.
It's indicated here that we advertised on March 1st and March 8th of this year.
Yes.
Knowing, I guess, that the Prop 39 funds would run out, would it not have made sense to walk this back a year or six months ago or some other length of time to possibly allow for additional people to maybe come forward and submit?
We would like a longer timeframe that you mentioned. However, the State Chancellor's Office provides us with a call to bids at a certain date, and it's only after that date that we are then able to move forward. And there was no great delay between that call and the actual advertisement.
Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I actually had the same questions, too. That was, now, when's the date that we have to spend that Prop 39? Is it June 30th of this year?
It is. The State Chancellor's Office indicates June 30th is as the targeted deadline, however.
Of 2016.
Sorry?
2016.
Yes.
Okay.
In the last, this is the third year that funds have been distributed. And in the previous two years, they've allowed for an extension as long as the project is underway, that the monies have been encumbered and the contractor is working, they do allow us to go as long as August. And that might be required in this case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move the item.
So move.
Oh, that's right. It has been moved and seconded. Correct. So go ahead and cast your vote. Motion carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay. Now we're on to Item 6.8, Resolution 16 point, or 16-12, supporting Assembly Bill 1721 and 1892 for community college affordability and Cal Grant Program. And I think Terry Flugman is going to present the item.
Yeah, I'll move approval.
Motion by Trustee Milchiker, second by Trustee Wright. Terry, go ahead and comment, please.
Do you need me to introduce the item?
I think it'd be helpful for the public to do that.
Sure. You have before you a resolution to support two legislative bills by Assembly Member Medina. He's the Chair of the Higher Education Committee. And these would, these are recommending that we reform the Cal Grants program. I'll just go through just a few brief points about that. As you know, the Board of Governors program provides free tuition to 60% of all community college students, but it doesn't provide any cost for textbooks, it doesn't, or transportation, or food, or housing, or any of the other barriers that keep students from coming to college. But it does, and what's interesting about this is that the community college students make up 65% of all students in California, but they only receive 7% of the grant funding. And so this, these bills would raise the maximum award under the Cal Grant B program. That grant would be 6,000, it would raise it from 1,551 to 3,000. And that grant would be $6,000 today if it had kept up with inflation, and it hasn't. It would raise the eligibility age limit from 28 to 31. And we know that more than 30% of our students are greater than the age of 28. And it would increase the total number of Cal Grant awards from 25,750 to 30,000. That's AB 1721. AB 1892 would establish an additional competitive Cal Grant C award, which would essentially cover CTE programs that are less than a year in length. And why that's important is to get people back to work. We've got a shortage of about 1 million students before 2025, so this would be a way to get them.
Workers.
Workers in the market faster, yeah. So we're recommending your approval on this item.
Great. Thank you very much, Trustee Wright.
It was an interesting table attached to this that I thought was very interesting, which talked about the cost of community colleges versus the UCs and the Cal States. And in fact, in many cases, it's noted here that the costs really for community colleges are much larger.
Right.
But I was noticing there's a star here for star three, in which they compared UC Irvine, Cal State, University of Fullerton, and IVC. And the figures here, UCs were around 8,000 to 9,800, but their tuition there is about 3,000, 13,000. So that doesn't, didn't kind of make sense to me, to that cost.
Well, because of the, a lack of grant aid that's available to community college students. So that takes into consideration after they've exhausted all of the grant aid available to them, their net cost is actually higher for community college students for that reason, because of the 7%. We have 65% of the students, but they're only getting 7% of the grant funding.
Okay. But it was an interesting chart. Thank you.
Yeah.
Exhibit.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just wanted to mention that the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force voted approval for both of these items.
And I'd like to add also, the League, the State Chancellor's Office, and the Board of Governors are all supporting these bills.
Thank you, Terry. I don't have any further questions. I was struck by the fact, and you explained it well, that they had community colleges as being less affordable than the UC and the CSUs. And I think you explained the reason why, because of the net cost. I guess the question is, how did we get to this point? But that's another matter. We're trying to fix it. And I was really happy to see that they're adding CTE. I guess my question is, what's the prognosis in the legislature for this, for the passage of these bills?
Probably not very good. It's heading to appropriations. It did pass the Higher Education Committee. It's heading to appropriations. I called the State Chancellor's Office last week, and the projected cost is about 400 million. But what may end up happening is they may take some of these in tournament policy, like raising the age limit or something. So we'll see what happens.
Do we ask the UCs and the CSUs to yield to us their grant?
Sure, I'm sure they'd be happy to, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table to approve these resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Witt.
Terry, I just wanted to tell you thank you. This handout was, it's weight in gold. It truly represents what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. No other requests to speak? Go ahead and cast your vote. Thank you again, Terry. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. The item carries. Okay, 6.9, Saddleback College Sciences Building Project, Change Order Number Four.
No changes to this item?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So move.
Motion by Trustee Milchiker, a second by Trustee Wright. No further discussion. Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Motion carries, 6.10, Board Policy Revision. Any comments by the Administration?
I do. You have for you four board policies for review and study. You will see that BP 2120 Institutional Planning will have two words changed on this when you see it back for second reading and for your full board approval. If you take a look at that, the last sentence should read, "The Chancellor shall submit the plans to the Board of Trustees for approval, period." There is, someone got strike happy there.
That was my question, and thank you for addressing it. Is there any other, is there a motion to, or is there any questions for Deborah? No? So is that we need a motion for accept and review for study? Motion by Trustee Wright.
Second.
Second by Trustee Lang. No further discussion. Go ahead and cast your vote. Motion carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.10, Board Policy Revisions, Employment of Relatives, Nepotism. Any comments from the Administration?
No changes.
Okay. Questions for Deborah? No? Okay, I'll accept a motion to move the item.
So move.
Motion by Trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by Trustee Jay. No further discussions. Please go ahead and vote. Item carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.12, Academic Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes to the item? Is there a motion to move the item?
So move.
Okay, motion by Trustee Lang, second by Trustee Jay. And there is further discussion? Trustee Wright.
Just a comment here. I was noticing that with Item A, it was A1G, that faculty person was hired by IVC, and IVC wasn't, they didn't list the college there, but it was IVC.
A1B is IVC.
A1G, A1G.
Yes, that is IVC. I apologize.
Okay.
Glenn, do you want that person?
I was going to raise my hand, but you.
Very good.
But it was IVC, okay.
Okay, we got it squared away?
Yes.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second.
But it doesn't say so.
And go ahead and, any further comment? Go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.3, 6.13, Classified Personnel Action Items.
No changes.
No changes to the item? Motion by Trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by Trustee Wright. No further discussion. Go ahead and vote. 6.13 passes unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.14, Full-Time Faculty Hiring Amendments. IVC and Saddleback College approved the amendments to full-time faculty hiring lists for 2016 through 2017.
Move approval.
Motion by Trustee Lang.
Second.
Second by Trustee Wright.
The item itself may be self-explanatory, but in essence, we're just keeping the two lists current for the colleges to make certain we're on top of the recruitment form.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chancellor Begay, thank you. No further discussion on the item? Go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.15, Sabbatical Revision, Approve Revision to Sabbatical Project Previously Approved by the Board in January 2016.
Move approval. Professor Pestalazze went through and he shifted some of the colleges he was looking at for study.
Okay.
So this is modifications, so the Board has to approve it.
Volleyball, yeah. Motion by Trustee Lang. And who seconded it? Trustee Witt? No further discussion? Oh, sorry, we do have further discussion, correct? My correction.
So I looked back at the list that he had originally submitted, and I can understand why he dropped SC and Springfield in Nebraska, but I'm confused about Notre Dame being changed off the list. It says top volleyball programs, and obviously you missed one, but I guess we'll stay in California, I guess, and Hawaii.
Yes.
All right.
I'm not into interpreting his goals and intention of that aspect. I just know he's a very good coach, looking for the best for his students.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, I think we have a motion and a second, had discussion. Go ahead and cast your vote. And the motion carries unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Six point, I'm sorry, now we're into reports. 7.0, Irvine Valley College Professor of the Year. Oh, any comments or? Nope. 7.2, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. 7.3, Basic Aid Report. 7.4, Monthly Financial Status Report. Deborah?
I just want to add that as of today, you'll be glad to know that since the March 31st report is up another 1.1 million. So things are turning for the better. Good.
Good to hear. 7.5, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. I think you commented on the wrong item, but I knew what you meant.
I did. Thank you.
7.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report. 7.7, Facilities Plan Status Report. I see Trustee Wright. On which, 7.7?
7.7. Just a couple of quick questions. One is, what's the status of the Fine Arts HVAC? Is that going forward, or is that? They were saying there were some problems.
There are problems. The contractor has a very, very tight timeframe on that project. To give you an example, over at IVC, the A400 or Liberal Arts Project is a $6.8 million construction project that was performed over 18 months supposedly, and now it's moved into another year, on top of that with the problems we've had with the contractor. Here at Saddleback College, we're hoping to complete $5.3 million worth of construction over a three-month period of time. So we need that contractor to be on point. And it's 30 days into, this is speaking historically, it was 30 days into his contract, and he had not performed the requirements of the contract at that time. So we're starting to be a little bit more adamant about those kinds of things, hold a little more meetings. It is problematic. We're still moving forward, haven't decided to pull the plug yet. However, we are beginning to look at potential modifications to the scope of work.
Okay. And then also, the Liberal Arts Building, the status of completion for that, what's?
The Liberal Arts Building is, that's the A400 project that I just mentioned as problematic. Our contractor on this project has, it would be an exaggeration to say a complete disregard, but does not seem to have any respect for the schedule that's been established for this project. It's a matter of two steps forward, one step back. Two steps forward, one step back. And for every four weeks that we have spent in construction on this project, we've had two weeks' worth of delay. We're scheduled to have this project complete at the end of May. We're for the, what's called substantial completion, when we can start going and putting in the furniture. We're looking at that going out now to possibly end of June, early July. And it is endangering our ability to start classes in the fall.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay. Move on to reports from administration and governance groups. Saddleback College Academic Senate, Blake Stevens.
Thank you. Good evening, President Jamal, members of the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Portner. First, I would like to introduce to you our incoming president-elect who's here tonight, Kim DRC.
Great.
So within minutes after commencement, Kim will be taking over.
There are also three weeks of instruction and then finals left in the spring semester. I am happy to report of the excellence of the students' progression this semester that I see in my classes and hear about in other classes. So I'm really happy with what the students have made of this semester. The academic senate elections for leadership ended at noon today, so I have our new senate executive leaders for 2016-17 to report to you. Kim DRC was previously elected as president. Dan Walsh is president-elect. So Dan Walsh will be president-elect in the coming year, and then academic senate president the year after. Charlie Myers is vice president. Ken Brady is secretary, and I will be past president very soon. The statewide academic senate plenary for spring 2016 was held last week in Sacramento. Multiple days of presentations, resolutions, and speeches at the pro and con mics. There was also a presentation for AB 2017, easy for me to remember, that's next year, which is a tax of 1% on incomes above $1 million in the state of California. This is all about providing colleges with money for student mental health services. The stories that we heard were compelling and poignant, to say the least, as students struggle with mental illness and still try to be successful students. This is related to Prop 30's extension. And so I'd like you to ask you to watch the progress of Assembly Bill 2017 as it moves through Sacramento. That's it for this evening, and I want to thank you for your leadership tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Faculty Association.
Good evening, trustees. So we are reaching the end of a long and eventful year, and we also are having a change in leadership, although I'm still president of the Faculty Association until May 25th or 24th, I guess is my last day. I will then be passing on the baton to Mark Blethyn, who is also here, who's our president-elect currently, who will be sitting in this seat starting at the June meeting. So I have one more meeting after this. We also just concluded our elections for officers for the next two years. And our new officers are president-elect, Vice President Kurt Meyer, who's also here. Blake Stevens is our new membership chair. Parisa Sultani is our secretary, and Frank Gonzalez is our treasurer. And then continuing on will be myself as past president, and Louis Long as chief negotiator. And thank you, Todd, for mentioning the One Book One College event tomorrow. I hope that you will all join us. In addition to the speaker talk and book signing, we will also be having a number of student performances and art exhibits. There's going to be music. There's going to be readers theater, and also a dance piece inspired by the book that was choreographed and will be performed by students. So I hope that everybody can make it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Claire. Thanks for your participation in our meetings over the last couple of years. We'll miss you. Kathy Schmiedler, IVC Academic Senate.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and all. Happy Spring Planting Festival that celebrates renewal and freedom. And I did want to ask for those of you who might be shaving your heads whether you're also going to be donating your hair, because there's actually, there are a lot of people who need hair donations, mostly people undergoing chemotherapy, but other kinds of disorders where people make hair pieces for them from donated hair. Real hair makes much better hair pieces. And there are places to donate hair. So that would be a nice little icing on the cake of shaving your head for this other feature. I also went to the ASCCC plenary, as did many of our faculty members. And one of the other things that Blake left me some things to say about it, which was very kind of him. The first day and a half was joint with the end of the meetings for the chief instructional officers, chief student service officers, and the chief CTE officers, or whatever their title is. All of those groups were also represented, which is why we were in Sacramento at the convention center instead of the normal, not-quite-in-San Francisco hotel where we usually meet. And so the theme was workforce development, and I think we were modeling a real effort to do collaborative and cooperative thinking and work, collaborative across the state. There were regional meetings as well, and of course, collaboration among those groups that I mentioned with the faculty in attendance as well. So hopefully, this will be a kickoff to a big effort across the state for workforce development and the integration of that in community colleges. So we also have three more weeks of classes before finals and then commencement. We are in the midst of our elections for president and vice president of the academic senate. However, unless there is a very successful write-in campaign, I think you will have this, you will have me to kick around yet another year. But I can always hope that there will be a write-in campaign, right? We do have a new curriculum chair coming in. Chris Loffler, who has been our assistant curriculum chair this year, will be taking over as curriculum chair. And this year's curriculum chair, Diana Hurlbut, will be moving into the assistant curriculum chair position specifically focusing on CTE curriculum, which has been grabbing her interest. So this is a very happy, very American, peaceful change in leadership. Some of our other leaders are staying the same. We have some other new people coming in, and not all of those have been chosen yet. Thank you.
Peaceful. Nice to hear that. Vice Chancellor Technology and Learning Services. Vice Chancellor Human Resources.
After the last board meeting, a group of us went up to Los Rios Community College District to attend their workshop and interest-based approach. That group was Mark Blethyn, Scott Green, Jan Mastriangel, Teddy Lorcher, and myself. The concepts dealt to some extent with collective bargaining, but they also dealt with an open dialogue basis, where you try to really confront the issues that are in front of you. And frankly, we've all agreed that we would explore the concepts in the days to come. So we hope that is productive in days to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Business Services.
Yes. Normally in May, we bring the BARK Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation Committee recommendations to the board, where we do a presentation on the process that was used for the recommendations as well as all the projects. We go over each of the projects so that you have a really good information before you to consider before we fold it into the tentative budget that's done in June. We're at a point where the stadium project, the bids are going to be coming in at the end of April. There's going to need to be about two to three weeks in which those are assessed and analyzed, working interactively with Saddleback College. Not only other bids coming in for that project, but also to a parallel project that informs that project, the site improvement project. So there's going to need to be some time to go through that and do some assessment to come up with some options and some possibilities for that, to then loop back to the Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation Committee and possibly the Capital Improvement Committee that are the district committees that have IVC and Saddleback attendees at it, to be able to come up with a holistic approach. So we're looking at the June board meeting, which will be bringing some information back on the stadium project. And BARK will be meeting at the beginning of May to determine strategies. Is it best to bring a partial recommendation to the board? We don't feel that May will be at a good, a good month to do that. So at the very earliest, it would be June. We talked as a group that they would be willing to work throughout the summer if they need to bring a recommendation in July or August. We talked about projects that should be identified that might need to start July 1st, and the new fiscal year that would be impacted by the timing. So we're going to be looking at all that, and more to come in May. We'll give you a little bit of update on process, recommendations as far as timing and process, as far as the BARK recommendations. So it could very well be that we might have a tentative budget where we have just a lump sum holding amount for basic aid recommendations, where we bring the actual projects, we'll have a more holistic approach to give you, or it might be a partial. More to come.
Thank you. IVC Classified Senate.
Hi, good evening. First off, I just wanted to start by saying that I received a lot of positive feedback about the trustee listening session. I know the classified who attended at IVC felt they were heard, and they really appreciated the opportunity to be able to express some of their frustrations and their concerns about some of the things that have been going on over the past year or so. So they definitely appreciated everyone who was there and continue to tell me how much they really enjoyed that opportunity. So thank you very much. The other thing is, we, like so many of us, are winding down the spring semester. We have a couple of more learning lunch series dealing with some technology. We're going to be focusing on MySite and exploring MySite this Friday. And then we do continue with some stress management through one of our classified who has a background in kinesiology. So we'll be doing that near the last two months. And then today, as a matter of fact, we had, I had a group of people join me in the Classified Senate office, where we viewed the webinar about the Professional Development Learning Network through the chancellor's office. And it was an hour-long webinar, and it is where you can go and create a profile and really access all the professional development seminars, conferences, resources that are going on across the state. And you can create a profile and keep track of conferences you've attended, online learning you've participated in. So the group that joined me for that today were really excited about that. They're really looking forward to using that resource, and it's definitely something as a senate we're going to be utilizing in the future to help encourage that. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And last, but not least, the SEA president, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we want to thank the Board of Trustees for the listening sessions. As President Martin also expressed, the classified staff did feel that they're being heard. We're hoping that the spirit of confidentiality and the freedom to speak their minds will continue in future listening sessions. But we thank you very much for being able to be available for those listening sessions. CSA leadership statewide is going to be heading to Washington DC next month. They're going to be speaking to members of Congress about the issues that affect classified employees and to advocate for more funding for resources and training. CSA is going to be urging Congress to fund the Every Student Succeeds Act and Title I, and that provides funding for students who need it most. They're also going to try to make it a priority for Congress to pass House Resolution 551, and that's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Congress had originally promised to fund about 40% of that act for those that need special education, but have only done about 16% up until now. The passage of this resolution will allow Congress to live up to their promise to fund 40% for special education. In addition, CSA will be expressing its support for early childhood and preschool education and funding for training related to child nutrition. So there's going to be a lot of activity with CSA leadership going to Washington DC and hopefully being able to accomplish a lot. This past April 9th, I personally attended the Tartan Day Dinner Gala in Los Angeles. And the only reason why I bring this up is because it's a gala that Scottish and Scottish-Americans celebrate Scottish culture and the history of their respective clans. And like I said, the reason why I bring this up is because the official bagpiper for that gala was a former Saddleback student, Cindy McIntosh, who is also the official Scottish-American bagpiper for the royal family, specifically Prince Andrew and the Duchess of York. Also in attendance was the Deputy Counsel General of the United Kingdom, Bernadette Green, actress Cecilia Emery, who is in the second-best exotic marigold hotel Highlander, Star Wars, and also Scottish actor Ross King, who was the entertainment correspondent at KTLA, and he co-hosted Good Morning America. Also, too, one of the people that were in attendance at the gala was Mark Gibson. And at your desk, you have a photo of the very, one of the first Saddleback College ID cards. And when he found out that I worked at Saddleback College, he wanted to show me his ID card. And this is the one that was issued in 1968, and he still keeps it in his wallet to this day. Very proud to be a Saddleback student. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Well, sadly, tonight, we adjourn our meeting in memory of Saddleback student Dorian Wyatt, who was tragically killed in an automobile accident. She is the granddaughter of Mike Harrison, a cherished community leader who is close to the Saddleback College Foundation. Memorial Scholarship Fund has been set up in her name. We also mourn the loss of former Saddleback College employee Wendy Baker, Assistant Dean of Student Services and Financial Aid from 1984 to 2004. Our thoughts and prayers go out to their family, family members, friends, and colleagues. Good night, everybody.